Welcome everyone to our council special meeting. We have two meetings, the first one is a workshop to review and discuss the current city staff work plan and city council goals and I think any of you who follow the city council and our city staff know that we have a really lot on our plates. Then after that and get public input, we will go to a closed session. And again, that's a very elaborate agenda as well. So we're going to have a very busy afternoon. But before we do that, I'm going to ask Nat, who is our assistant city manager, Roja Nasothera, to explain the rules according to the governor and how we do this. Then after he explains that, we'll do the pledge of allegiance.
Okay, I guess I'm a little bit one step ahead here with showing the video from our flag. So just a reminder to the public here on how to call into our council meetings. The first step, we do encourage members of the public, please watch this broadcast on channel 25 or YouTube Live. This has a short delay of approximately 10 seconds. You can watch it youtube.com/cityofmonterey or on the YouTube app, which can be downloaded from your mobile application service. To make a public comment, when you're viewing on YouTube or on channel 25, you'll see a lower third caption on the bottom of your screen and you can then call into the conference line. The phone number is area code 831-582-6500. That will get you into the system with no meeting access code required. We ask that you do dial star five to raise your hand virtually so that you'll be added into the queue to speak. That way we know if you're just listening by phone or would like to speak on that agenda item. Callers will be automatically unmuted until it is their turn to speak. We do ask the callers, please turn off your television or computer speakers or go to another room when you're connected by phone because any background noise will cause interference with the broadband. I'll be calling on each caller in the order of their hands raised and call out either the last four digits of their phone number or their individual by name based on caller ID. There will be a time limit announced by the mayor. I believe we've set for our study session here or council workshop a two minute time limit and we'll be sharing that on the screen as well so that you can follow along and see how much time you have. If you are following on YouTube Live, you'll need to subtract 10 seconds from what you see on the screen because of the delay. Or if you're watching on channel 25, the delay will be approximately 30 seconds. Please stay within your time limit and we look forward to hearing public feedback today.
Okay, with that, Nat, if you will show our flag. In a moment, I'll invite people to join us in the pledge of allegiance.
All right, here we go.
Okay, there it is on top of Colton Hall. So if all of you would please join our council and staff in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Clementine, would you introduce the city council, please, to our viewing audience?
Yes, absolutely. Councilmember Albert.
Here.
Councilmember Hafa.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
Present.
Councilmember Williamson.
Here.
And Mayor Roberson.
Yes, I'm here as well. And we want to welcome any of the folks who are watching us on the various media and very much want your input. A workshop, a study session is a little bit different than a normal city council meeting in that it's our opportunity to have a discussion as the council with our staff, provide general direction, also give an opportunity to our viewing public, our residents and citizens to share their ideas with us as well on this topic. Now, interestingly enough, we're going to have a staff report here shortly. And we have 74 priority items currently in the city of Monterey. Well, if any of you who have any kind of work or families or anything else, you probably realize that 74 priorities is very, very high, lots of high expectations and frankly, almost impossible to accomplish all at once. And the purpose of this meeting is not to say, well, this one is more important than that one and our staff should be spending all of their time on this or that. It's simply to get an understanding of everything that's going on in the city of Monterey. And for those of you who have followed us, you know, there is a great deal going on. And of course, the pandemic with the COVID-19 has complicated things as well as the economic pandemic and the social justice pandemic and the climate warming epidemic. So you add that all onto the normal workload of our staff and it's very, very demanding. But the city of Monterey is known for having high expectations and high production. And I know every staff member would love to take all of their priorities and have them done yesterday. But that just doesn't happen. And I think that's true of many people in Monterey that I come across. They have very high expectations for the city and they're willing to roll up the sleeves and help us with things too. I really love that sense of cooperation and the quality of people who try to help us. So the intent of this workshop, before I turn it over to our city manager, Hans Uslar, is just for the council and public to take a look at everything that's going on in the city so it's informative. And then if we can give our staff some direction or thoughts and if it's nothing more than, wow, you are amazing, we'll get to things when we get to things, maybe that's where we end up as well. Because you know the four quadrants that I talk about and council member Ed Smith uses that in his work where we have the four quadrants and I forget who came up with those. I know Eisenhower used it.
Stephen Covey.
Thank you, Stephen Covey. I was looking through my notes, couldn't find it. But and those of us who in education, we have these four quadrants and you take an issue or a priority and there are four quadrants and the first is important and urgent. And that's usually the first thing you want to do. The second quadrant is important but not urgent, which almost sounds like oxymoron. Then you have unimportant and urgent. As a teacher, I dealt with a lot of those things. So many things that somebody else thought was important and maybe we teachers didn't, but we had to do it. That's okay. Oh, thank you for the quadrant. Good on that. And finally, there's not important and not urgent. And so that's really the one we don't want to spend our time on. So I always like to use that quadrant. The first time I saw it as a teacher, I thought, this is really, really helpful to kind of figure out what I'm going to try to accomplish every day for my students. Very good, Madison. That's really good. I would just ask all of our viewers and people to think about that quadrant. It'd be really interesting to hear from you about how much of your work falls into which of those four quadrants. That would be an interesting survey. So Hans, share with us, please. And after that, we'll hear from the public.
Yes, thank you so much, Mr. Mayor and council members. This was actually slide 24, the quadrants. And it was a slide that we felt we could bring up at a time when somebody of the council or staff would talk about those prioritization models. It has become a good tradition that we check in from time to time with this council. I'm very grateful for the work that this council has conducted with respect to allowing us to jointly collaborate on setting goals and talking about the various items that are part of the of your city staff's day-to-day work as well as of some of the strategic initiatives and strategic plans that the city council has authorized or has initiated. And so it is a check-in. We did a check-in in October 2019 where we worked very long hours to late in the night with the council to come up with the prioritization of your top nine or 10 goals. And we have those goals in this presentation, but we also have them in the current agenda report. And then you told us at that time what was important for the city council. In October 2019, we had another check-in in January 2020. And then of course, unfortunately, COVID-19 happened and the check-in that we had possibly planned for June, July was tabled until we are meeting again today in September to talk about our work prioritization that we have. When the mayor spoke about the 74 different work programs that we have, I'm sure that there's probably another dozen or so that didn't make it on the list because they are almost done or they are in just simply forgotten because we are working on them so eagerly that they didn't make it to the list or other reasons why. This is not a complete list by no means, but it gives you probably the bulk of the programs that we are working on. So for today, what we'd like to achieve is two things that I want you to take away from that. I want to continue to have the city council have awareness about what we are working on. And I want you to also please continue to be aware that the existing staffing levels that we have in the city of Monterey require all of us, council, neighbors and staff to careful prioritize our work. There is a capacity with the determined by the existing staffing levels and it is absolutely necessary that we are aware, that we are completely aware of that and that we jointly with the community, with the council, with the staff, figure out how to balance that with our priorities. So today we want to talk about what we are doing as what we call routine work because that gets often overlooked. We want to talk about what the staff is working on and also what we have identified as the council work plan. We want to review the existing council priorities and we want to look briefly about the staff work plan. Please do not think unless you want to do it that we will go through every single one of the 74 program items, but we just want to kind of highlight what we are doing. And then of course, we hope that the council as well as the public can provide input and help us all to get to the next level. And I will talk a little bit about the next steps at the very end of the presentation. Next slide, please. When we talk about routine work, what often gets overlooked is what we are doing on a day-to-day basis. And I felt it was important to just highlight a few of those things because it's worthwhile. You have police and fire, of course, that are out there day in, day out to respond for calls for service. But when you look at our normal parks and recreation work, every six months, we are kicking out a new program guide that contains hundreds of program items that are carefully prepared, organized and stashed away. In the routine maintenance, you have street, you have the beaches, you have harbor, park, urban forestry facility maintenance. Our engineers create a lot of projects or complete projects for CIPN, CIP, but also pavement maintenance is a constant factor now thanks to the funding resources we have through measure X and measure S as well as SP1. Or was it SP2? I forgot, I'm sorry. SP1, thank you, Ed. Then the housing programs are important. Permitting, anybody who walks up to any of our counters usually needs help and receives a permit at the end of that. The library services are very important as we heard numerous times during the budget discussions. Library programming, if the library is fully open again, this is a community center with a lively programming taking place inside. And of course, there's the day-to-day operation of managing employees with all their requests and their needs as well as simply cutting paychecks, responding to healthcare questions, et cetera. Finance management, of course, checking revenue, sex, checking expenditures, going after those who do not pay their fines, et cetera. All routine work. And of course, there's legal and legislative services. And our city attorney does a tremendous job to update us, I believe, on a quarterly basis about the litigation status. And you know, people are very litigious and that's routine work for us. That's nothing unusual. And there are literally dozens of more routine staff work, but that's just what I came up with this morning. So we have on the left-hand side, the routine work. And then in the middle, we have a staff work plan. And that's a staff work plan that we call it that basically implements what council has given us. We are looking into the different elements that council wants us, has approved and delegated to us to work on it. But let's not forget, there are state and federal mandates that have nothing to do with the day-to-day politics in the city of Monterey, but that everything to do with what the state and the federal government is asking us to do. You have court decisions that come down to the city of Monterey and if we see a court decision that was made and that require us, requires us to retool our, let's say, HR policies, we have to do that. We have to take, to take track, keep track of judicial rulings, whether it's in environmental areas, HR areas, financial areas that comes down. We have to annually do reporting that we are required by everybody who gives us a grant, by everybody who has something to say about environment. We have environmental audits, we have financial audits, we have audits of Caltrans, et cetera. We have to adjust our city rules. And last but not least, we have to ensure that our fiscal health plan and that affects all departments is taken care of. That's all part of work that we are doing in addition to the routine things that come down on us. And then on the right-hand side, of course, we have now other initiatives that the council says and jointly discusses with the community. And we have to understand that these are priorities for us and we have to update our policies. We have to create new policies. We have to create actions that require council's approval. And then from there, from the council approval, they work into the staff work plan and all, of course, help enhance the quality of life here in Monterey. So these are the three elements that you have a staff for that and the staff resource is 100%. But it comes now to the point that you have to decide what is, what are the percentages we are spending on routine, on staff and on council issues. And between that are the balances. But when you dive a little bit deeper, and again, my point in the beginning was to ask you to be aware of that and also to consider how you allocate staff resources. About 5% of our staff works on about 37% of what we see is our current council work plan. And we did a quick analysis since January 2020 and I'll go over that in more detail. But you have mainly legal team and community development team working on the bulk of the initiatives that come forward. And I'd like you to be mindful that the community development team consisting out of mainly in this case, out of housing as well as planning, has a great deal of those routine work and staff work plan elements as well. Over 90% of the public hearings and public appearance items were written by, that we had in 2020, were written by the city attorney's office and the community development department. That is no discredit to finance and to public works for their reports, but you can see that we are dealing with affordable housing sites, rental protection, council updates to housing policies, et cetera, et cetera. This is all work that lands on the shoulders of certain staff members. And with that, again, my request from the beginning, be mindful, existing staffing levels require careful prioritization. If we go to the next slide, please. This is what we did since January 2020. And I just wanted to show that, to just highlight and amplify and back up my data points that I shared with you about how small the group of dedicated staffers are that are working actually on the main council work items and all the city's work items. Let's keep it more general. But you saw fiscal management included budget, measure Y, we had finance, we had HR and all other departments, very instrumental in making this happen. But the cannabis testing lab was in front of us. It sounds like, it seems like years ago, but that was quite a lift to bring this forward. And out of that, of course, if council recalls, came a determination by the city council that requires us to revisit that topic in order to come up with different languages with a different city ordinance to clarify the status of cannabis testing labs in the city of Monterey. We talked about affordable housing and the RFP there and et cetera. I don't want to go through every single item, but highlights there is wireless facilities. We had items in front of council for wireless facilities. We talked about evictions a couple of times. ADU was just one recent item that we discussed. And of course, what came forward to us also is the Monterey airport that all of a sudden is becoming also a larger work item than we had anticipated. Next slide, please. So here's where council helped us. And these were the priorities that in October and in January were reconfirmed. And your agenda package contains actually an attachment, I believe it's attachment one, that outlines how you as the individual council member rated priorities. And you remember, we had a staff facility workshop, facilitated workshop where our staff was together with the council, threw a lot of things against the wall. And at the end, there were several votes taken and this came out as the list of priorities. It was number one priority for the city council of Monterey to ensure that we have a fiscal accountability. Number two was affordable housing. Number three was staff. Let's come together up with funding mechanisms for city facilities and infrastructure. We are all aware about our aging infrastructure. The library is looking closely at upgrading the library. We know the public safety building is up for renewal. So that was number three. Number four and five were kind of categories that were more generalized, neighborhood preservation, keep small town feel. These are categories that council intentionally, I felt, put up as category or priority number four and five to kind of find categories that allow the priority setting in a way that ensures that everything gets its due diligence. Number six was technology. Number seven, multimodal plan, very important for council. And number seven had the same number of votes, which were the look at the value drivers for the city, look at that as an annual process. And number nine was expand, expand the marina and Wolf number two. And so the next slide will show you clearly what we have done. And I colored in red those that popped up with not being in connection with the work plan or the priorities that you gave us. And in yellow are those items that match the, some of the topics you gave us in the nine, which I presented in the previous slides, the nine priorities that you gave us there. Of course, COVID, nobody knew in January, we were talking COVID day in, day out now. So that has become a large-scale work program for us. But you can see, we did fiscal management. We are continuing to look at the budget. We continue to enhance our budget deficit that is structural, not enhance to decrease that obviously. And council was bold enough to put measure Y in front of the voters for November 3rd, which is a 2% TOT increase that will be paid by the hotel guest. We looked at affordable housing, we looked at water, we allocated water, we looked at photo proposals, came back with a task from the council. We looked at affordable housing with respect to rental assistance program, et cetera. So you see a lot of things in the list that we, that we found, we have really worked on. And the ones that you find in red are things that popped up, but were really time consumers for us as well. Next slide, please. Let me talk at the current work plan. And it's intentionally that you cannot read what is on the right-hand side because I really don't want to dive into that unless asked. But these are the items that you find in attachment two of our agenda report. And we kind of use the hierarchy that the mayor was introducing to us where we said, what's the urgency level and what's the importance level? And this is totally subjective staff or specifically, if you want to blame someone, the city manager's office, we put this together as we felt we have heard what council has expressed and how we mirrored that also against the items that council has prioritized in the respective workshops, October and January 2020. But here's what we would like you to do now. And what are your questions? Where do you think we can approve on? What kind of levels stick out to you that are maybe different in urgency, different in importance? Is, are there any programs, any issues that you say, you know what, we were just carried away in the moment and let's drop this right now or let's change that or combine that? Is there anything that stands out that you disagree with, with respect to our selection of urgency and importance level? And again, the mayor's introduction was spot on. He hadn't seen the slides yet, but that's exactly what we need to hear from you. And what do you think should be the next steps? Where do we go from here? What do you want us to do with that? Because I think we have started a tremendous collaboration in talking to you all about the prioritization. And I think this is really very, very helpful for all of us. And I'm very grateful for council to allow us to make this part of a workshop. And it's has become a tremendous tool for all of us to look at that. So where do we go from here? And the next slide, please, is public comments. So with that, I want to go back now to the questions and ask you if you have any questions or any concerns or if you want to go directly first to public comment and then react from there.
Since this is a workshop and a little bit different format, I suggest we go to the public. I would love to hear if some of our friends have had an opportunity to listen to this because many people who do follow the city council know a lot about these projects already, but to have this big summary is really valuable. And of course, everything has been complicated by COVID-19. It's, I would say in my almost 40 years on the council, first election, 26 total, that I can never think of a time that things have been so complicated. Then again, we haven't had a pandemic in 100 years either. And so complicated and so many demands on city services. So Nat, let's see if we have some folks who want to share some thoughts about what they just heard.
Yep, we do have a couple callers and just a reminder to those who've called in to please dial star five to raise your hand if you've called in. I've got the two-minute timer here and we'll start by taking a comment from Lorna Moffett. Thanks for joining us this afternoon.
Hello?
Yep, hi, Lorna.
Hi, hello. Mayor Roberson and city council members, this is really a public comment, if that's okay. I'd like to make everyone aware of the case where an environmental and human rights lawyer, Steve Donziger, won a $9.8 trillion law won a nine point eight trillion dollar lawsuit against Chevron, formerly known as Texaco, that dumped toxic drilling mud containing mercury, lead, copper and other noxious chemicals into fifteen hundred miles of the Amazon forest and the rivers and streams. As Mr. Donziger was arguing the case against Chevron in Ecuador back in two thousand nine, Chevron said expressly its long term strategy was to demonize him. Since then Chevron has hired investigators to track him, created publications to smear him and hired hundreds of lawyers from sixty different law firms to defend themselves from having to pay up so they can clean up their terrifying legacy of environmental harm. As a result, Donziger has been disbarred, his bank account frozen. He has to lean on his department for legal fees and as of August, he is under house arrest with an ankle bracelet. Donziger represented thirty thousand farmers and indigenous people in the Amazon over Chevron's massive contamination. Were the old liars as a corrupt judicial system rule, even with photographic evidence to substantiate their claims? Chevron countersued Mr. Donziger with charges of racketeering and bribery. The Ecuadorian judge Alberto Farah claimed Donziger bribed him during the original trial. Here later admitted he lied.
Yep, I'm I'm sorry. Yep, I'm sorry. We've we've ran out of time and and we've got to go on. Thank you, Lorna, for for calling. We appreciate it. And we don't have anyone else who's called in and has their hands raised for today's workshop, Mr. Mayor, so.
Okay, good. I don't mean good that we don't have participation. Good, we have a chance now for the council to chat a little bit. And and so again, Hans, thank you for the the outline. I I think someone coming in, an alien, for example, who came in and was observing what was going on in the city of Monterey from their spaceship would probably just be amazed about everything that's going on in this little city of twenty eight thousand people. So council, some thoughts, some guidance that we'll start with council member Dan, some things you'd like to share with Hans, our staff and our public, please.
Thank you.
Member Dan, start us off.
Hans, thank your staff for putting this together. I mean, I I think this makes it so much easier to see what's on your plate, your staff's plate and what the city's priorities should be is. I'm really happy to see this. I I have a couple of questions. One is the legal requirements. I would think the legal requirements, since they already have to be done, you could probably, I think, take that off this list because they're they have to be done anyway, unless it's just showing us how much the the staff has to actually do. But as a priority, that's got to be a top priority to begin with anyway, I would think. The second one is, you know, we've we've been and I hate to bring it up, but we we have we've gone a long way with small cell ordinance and I was a little surprised to see that way down on number sixty. Because I think some of our neighbors are are waiting to to find out exactly where we are on the ordinance. It has been a year and a half. So I would sure like to see that a little bit higher than sixty as in a priority. But otherwise, that that's all the comments I had. I I just think the legal requirements probably should be taken out and put either at the bottom because it's got to be done anyway. That was it, Mayor.
Okay, thank you.
So so the, do you think that the small cell ordinance should be regarded as very high urgency and importance level very high or we we rated them as medium, medium? But knowing what what we went through so far, if if council would like to do this as as very high and very high other items that are very high and very high need to be taken somewhere into a different prioritization then, because I like you to to be mindful of that the staffing resource has has a capacity and yes, council member Albert, you're right. We spent probably over thirty public outreach meeting on the wireless ordinance item. And it it has still evolved after the last time we touched it because the F C C continues to 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 change the rules of the game.
I I guess, I'm sorry, I I guess what I was saying is that I think our public have been very patient with the cell, the cell, the small cell ordinance and I and my understanding is that it sounded to me like we were very close to closing that ordinance and and getting it on the books. And so that's why I just thought it'd be good either an update from the the staff where we are in it or at least something a little bit higher than sixty. But I'd like to hear from the other council members if they if they even want to talk about it.
Yes, Dan, if I I may interject. When we last looked at this as a city council, we asked our staff once again, gave them a work assignment on top of everything else that they have to do to do some public outreach. And then along came COVID. So that certainly threw a monkey wrench in the gears. And then secondly, we've had a court ruling that upheld some of the F C C's action, did give us a slight window of local control over aesthetics. And so that really has changed the the ball field. So I think an update on where we are would be very helpful because I know there are folks who still like to get some closure on that and I'm with you. I agree with that. I don't know if Hans, if you wanted to ask our staff to do an update now or we can certainly have it soon.
No, I I don't want, Mary, I don't mean to interrupt you. I don't want an update now. That's just going to cause a lot more discussion. I I would like an update sooner than later, but I just wanted to express where I thought it should be on the chart. That's all.
Yeah, and I think, no, and I think part of the, I wouldn't necessarily call it frustration, part of the interest from some of the public is where is it? And again, COVID and that recent latest court ruling have changed the the ball field without question. So an update would be very helpful.
No, okay. Yeah, and and council, just just to remind you, the work has has been progressed. Council, you looked at recently changing the rules for undergrounding of utilities. And that was an outflow also that the ordinance that you passed that had something to do with the wireless facilities and also the wireless draft ordinance that made those changes. So there were there was progress and this was a key element that had to be done prior to getting the draft ordinance again dusted off and brought back to you and absolutely, we 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 will provide you with an update. And you you can then evaluate with the community the workload that it will take to to bring this wireless ordinance over the finish line. Absolutely, and we will do that.
Perfect. Thank you, Hans. Other council members have some thoughts in general. Council member Alan, please. You're muted, Alan.
Just a quick reminder here, we're, you know, these workshops, we we go in front, we facilitate, we have whiteboards, we use our handy dandy tools like little stickies to to talk about work plans. What we're doing here is not like your typical meeting. We're we're sharing and writing down thoughts on the whiteboard, the virtual whiteboard, if you will, and so if if you have any feedback, please feel free.
Oh, good. Thanks, Nat. That's very helpful. And I had to look around so I could find all my council members again.
I'm looking at the council priorities. I don't know if if Nat can put that up because that's what I'm going to talk about first. And I want to give credit to staff and to council for addressing what our number one priority was, which was fiscal accountability. And I think it's important to remember that again, really due to things partially out of our control, namely the state imposing greater pension contributions. We were facing a fiscal crisis before COVID came along. And with guidance from the staff and with the support of our community, we passed measure G. And so that hopefully will address that issue. But then we got hit with COVID. And I don't need to remind people how much that particularly hurt the city of Monterey. We had to make a lot of difficult decisions. And we came up with a comprehensive plan that partly involved cuts in programs, partly involved employee concessions, partly involved neighborhood concessions and giving up things they care about and partly involved business concessions, giving up things they cared about. It was really a comprehensive and equitable solution. And so I want to and and that was not easy for us and I know that a lot of staff time went into coming up with that plan. So number one, I think we need to thank staff for that. Our second priority, affordable housing, we're also making a lot of progress on. And again, I know it's taken a lot of staff time. And incidentally, those two priorities continue to be my personal number one and two. Those are, you know, essential. I think city facilities and infrastructure has kind of gotten put a little bit on the back burner, understandably, as we've had to pivot to COVID nineteen, but it's still something long term that we need to keep an eye on. And if the T O T passes, my thinking is any additional revenues, once we are able to stabilize our budget and get out of this crisis, hopefully we can target some of those to infrastructure. On neighborhood preservation, here I'm going to agree with Dan, but keeping our small town feel and neighborhood preservation, I think are directly connected to the small cell and to undergrounding. And I do understand everything that Hans said, but I I agree, we need to, as soon as we're able bring that back into focus. Technology, we've made major improvements in that. So again, kudos to staff in terms of adaptive traffic lights, in terms of technology for how we run our business operations and in particular our parking. So that's another major, major transition and accomplishment. The multimodal plan, I'm not sure. I didn't really see that on the work plan unless it was part of the streak infrastructure. But so maybe after I'm done here, city manager, if you could speak to that, is there, you know, is that just something that we're doing anyway and it's going to be an update and or how how do we get that back into focus? And then I'm trying to jump around here. I got a bunch of windows open. The values driver, I think we've never, we still have not really had a conversation about, is this the process we want? Is there a better process? I think I would like to see a process that maybe engage the public a little bit more. And then expanding the Marina and Wharf. That's not really something we've done or worked on, but we have certainly done a lot of things to improve our operations on the Marina and Wharf. So we've been, again, and I know it takes a lot of time. Thank you to our real estate department for negotiating new leases, in particular, for trying to implement the sustainable fishery plan on Wharf two. And that's something I hope we'll get an update on. I really would like to see those leases with our fishing, with our local fishermen concluded so that they can improve those facilities and and bring local fish to our wharf and to our restaurants. So we are doing stuff there, improve the the parking lot, but and and for me personally, probably, you know, definitely not as much of a priority as some of the other items. That really pretty much, I don't disagree with the other matrix you presented, Hans, in terms of high, you know, importance and and urgency, other than I do feel like we need to maybe make the small cell a little bit more urgent. So thank you very much.
Thanks, Alan. That was a really excellent summary. Other comments?
If I just use the opportunity, Mr. Mayor, to respond to multimodal plan before I forget, Councilmember Hoffa. Yes, we we have been working on multimodal plan. You might recall that we brought back the Fortag plan and signed up for that, that will expand the bike routes through the Fremont Laguna Grande sector. We also were able to obtain several grants that that will increase our signal improvements in 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 certain areas and with that, of course, will will hopefully help also with our traffic congestion and volume. We have a partnership also with TMC. And just today, I was asked to look over signage where we combined signage funding from TMC for the recreation trail that basically advertises now with combined with city of Monterey distinct signage, bike routing throughout the region. So it's not just the bike trails anymore in in Monterey, but also their multimodal plan with respect to to biking. As you know, M S T has suffered probably the most significant losses of all agencies on the peninsula. But there has have been movement in the multimodal plan as well. They have been not very, very huge, significant, but we are plugging along there as well.
Okay, thank you very much. What can I add? One other thing? I'm sorry, I just kind of.
No, no, this is a discussion. Go ahead, Alan.
You know, I am cognizant of the fact that our staffing is reduced. And I'm cognizant of the fact that we still have a lot of essential services to provide. But I do think, and I don't want to lose track of this issue that came up as a result of the Black Lives Movement, which was another, there were a number of social justice issues that Tyler and I brought forward. I don't know that they're urgent. I do believe they're important and so I I don't want to lose track of them. And I understand that we have some other things that are more immediate, but I definitely want to make sure we keep them sort of on the table.
Yeah, Councilmember Hoffa, on October sixth, we will bring forward to the council what what we call a diversity resolution, which we see as a good starting point for the bullet points that 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 you and Councilmember Williamson learned through your specific public interactions. And it 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 will be for us basically a starting point to commit to further actions pending council guidance, community input, etcetera, etcetera. So so please stay tuned. That will be part of your agenda at the next full council meeting, October sixth.
Excellent. That's exactly what I'm talking about. Thank you.
Oh, that's great. Good. Tyler, Ed, who'd like to go next and share some thoughts? Okay, council member Ed, please.
Yeah, thank you very much. I want to first look back at the the priority exercise that we we did and just want to address three things that I identified. I want to continue. And the first one is the fiscal accountability that is across the board, I think, our highest priority with all the council members, the mayor. So I I identified it very high, but without fiscal responsibility, as we saw, you know, we can't plan for the future, so we need stability on the on the money side, but dedication is is easy to say to it, but we have to be aware that we get monthly demands and of course, COVID is a great example of how things can quickly change. But that being said, and as many people have said, a planned budget is a commitment to the organization's priorities. And we went through that and I think we were one of the fortunate cities that were able to actually work really hard with our staff with some great leadership to help us and get to a place where we still have a vibrant city and we still can see things moving and and thriving as it is in this condition. The other one I want to address is the value drivers and the annual process. I think this is an outstanding exercise. I put it as a number one. And I I still feel that this needs to be tied in and wrapped into the budget cycle. I don't know how we can do that under some variable conditions, but at some point, I think it would be easier for all staff and parties in in the budget cycle for us to be powering through this. in November and January, and then we get out of the way and then cycle forward with a cohesive budget that's a two-year, a biannual budget. So I want to support that system and want to reinforce that that, that is the number one priority for me. And the third one I want to talk about was the keep small town feel. I put it as number three. And for me, that's health and safety, cleanliness, dealing with the, the transient population that impacts drug abuse, alcohol abuse, small businesses, you know, street crime. To put that under the heading, if, if we can't have a system and city that works cohesively together with our regional partners, with public safety, appropriate responses to, to deal with the things that come up, we're missing out. And then that erodes the quality that I think we've all spoke about and maintaining the small town feel and a healthy community. So that's a high priority. Now I want to go to the longer list of the staff work, and I want to make more brief comments, I'm going to just power through these. Wildlife response and E O C and mutual aid, probably not as far away from achieving what the city manager would feel is a top-notch system in place because it's been tested. So I think that should be a high priority for the work plan. But we need to identify what it is that we need to do so that we are prepared. And that relates to one of the other items, which is item number, let's see. It was the forestry, Community Wildfire Preparedness Plan, number thirty-five. So I want to make sure that we keep that in the ever-present on the priority list so that we get closer and closer to always paying attention to the vulnerabilities of fires, because we have ocean and a little flat, and then boom, we're surrounded with trees. So we need to be prepared with that. On item twenty-eight, it's referred to as waterfront parking expansion. I, I'm not sure what that is, but is that related to the Wharf Two idea that I talked about that comes out as expand Marina Wharf Two as the last priority? What is that one referred to, Hans?
These are, these are the projects to, to complete the waterfront planning. You know, we did a phase one of the waterfront parking lot. Phase two is coming to you. And just yesterday, we had the bid opening for the compactor room, the relocation of the compactor room from Wharf One into the waterfront area. So that, these are the projects from twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-three.
Okay, good. So those are on a pathway for resolution over the next couple of years. So I want to link, link back to that lower priority, which was the, my thought that we need to pay attention to the sustainable fishing industry as that last couple of years, it's been kind of low on the intake of squid and anchovies and everything else. But Wharf Two becomes even more important for us because we've secured leases, we have the fishing industry. And from what people have been telling me, that we can resolve a lot of conflicts and make people more funds and make revenue potentially higher if we think in terms of the offload. That's tied to security and it's tied to also the replace, heavy replacement schedule of Wharf Two. So I know that is a long-range plan. It can be costly, but I think we just need to kind of get that going at some point, probably in, you know, the next two to three years, had kind of have some direction. But I don't think anything from the work plan should be set aside to do anything like that. That's just, that's a long-term project. Let's see, undergrounding, yes, important, and I look forward to an update. That's already been said. I'd like to know what our possible choices may be. I'm not looking for a, a secured plan that tells us in three months, nine months, you know, twelve months, that's going to happen. I just need to learn a lot more about how we potentially would start taking the undergrounding connected to safety and grant opportunities and working with stakeholders to see what opportunities do we have. But I need to learn more on the undergrounding potential. And again, that's a long term, that's probably seven to ten years. But we need to start so that we can eventually get to the point where universally, the entire city could be undergrounded for a variety of reasons, but beauty and safety. The Intergovernmental Services Agreement, ICSIS, it's listed as fifty-five. And it's listed as medium and high. I agree with that. Does not have any priority list. It's listed as no. I just want to say that ties to our number one, which is fiscal stability, because we provide a lot of services, we have a good relationship. Any opportunity to continue doing long-term, to keep our military partners happy and wanting to be here is, is very important and ties to number one. Small cell ordinances, it's been mentioned, yeah, need an update. I'd like to learn more of the FCC changes. The coastal plan update, it's been a long time since we spoke about it. It's to be determined. But as I recall, there's a variety of things we could take back control if we have our coastal plan and look forward to seeing how we can do that and have a little more clarity in how we manage our waterfront or through the coastal plan that we would then have certified and approved. Lastly, it's the standards of coverage and fire station staffing. As we've seen the last four or five months with the fire season, tremendous strain on public safety, especially the fire department. So I look forward to the staffing report and making sure that we're prepared to be able to protect our community while we're able to still respond and help our, our neighbor partners and as we send out our fire teams across California. I want to make sure that we're able to participate in, in that demand as well. But making sure we know we have the equipment and the manpower and the training and all of that. So look forward to, you know, more of that when we get to the point where we can receive a report. I think this is a good start. I don't see anything that tells me I want to move anything out or shift anything higher. I think with the comments with the council, it makes sense to me. The only thing I'll say is if you go through this, some of the things look like they can almost be removed because they've been accomplished. So I think there's a lot of evidence here that there's a lot of really good things going on. So we'll probably always have a list that's this long. But some are in quadrant two, that's going to take time. And others will always remain in quadrant one, where you just have to put the fire out when it comes up. So that's all I have.
All right, good. Excellent, Ed and Nat. Thank you for the summary that you're keeping going on our chart. That's extremely helpful and I'm sure you can copy that to us later because it's such great information. Okay, Councilmember Tyler, are you ready to weigh in, my friend?
Absolutely.
Did they, did they leave you anything?
Well, what I'll try to do is not repeat things, maybe just second some of the comments that have already been made because I, I, I think that we're, we're in alignment in a lot of ways because we're going through this experience together and we're identifying some of the same issues. So I don't want to waste too much time at this point. But one of the things, and I'm starting off with this one because it, to me, it's, it's probably the most important thing that I hope we can all kind of create some kind of consensus behind. I've talked to Hans about this and I, I brought this up before at retreats that we've had. But I think we really need to figure out the scheduling thing. How do we conduct meetings? How do we decide when, what's going to be discussed? When? Can we have a calendar that identifies what's anticipated to be on the council agenda in upcoming council meetings, right? So we know when we're going to be approving the budget. We know when we're going to be reviewing, giving feedback to, to the city manager and the city attorney. We know that the C D B G funding needs to be approved. We know when certain things are going to happen. So let's get that on a calendar, let's be really clear. And that way, when myself or, or any of you all, as my colleagues, want to present something on the agenda, we know, hey, let's not touch the first meeting in June because, or the second meeting in June, because we know we need to approve the budget, right? But in that way, it gives us a little bit of a better outlook of what's coming up. And I know that one of the concerns from staff's perspective is, is if we as, as citizens of Monterey kind of go out and share, hey, this is on the agenda planned for December, the first meeting in December. Now we're creating this false expectation and what if something happens, right? We, we are in an industry where things change a lot. Well, that's incumbent upon us as, as elected officials to keep that in mind as we're communicating things. So it's, you know, I, I, I think that there's a, a way that we can go about the business practices side of how we do that. But I think it's really important that we all kind of find a way of getting on the same page. And sometimes meetings are just going to be long and, and it's going to be unexpected. We didn't know that people were going to show up during public comments and share their perspective about cruise ships in the bay, right? We, sometimes we just don't know that things are going to come up. But as best as possible for us to be all collectively working together and having some kind of calendar where we can have that conversation, I think is really important for us to kind of be in sync with each other as we move forward. My next point. And so I, I'm really big on people. And when we talk about our first priority being fiscal responsibility, well, what is our, our, our most expensive asset? It tends to be people, right? We put a lot of funding into hiring personnel to execute the desires of the council and of the community. And so I think it's important that we as a council have some kind of feedback or input in regards to how well is our staff performing? So I know that in our Friday folders, we often get reports from the, the, the fire chief or the police chief or, or community development, right? We get, we get these reports every so often, but I think it's important for us to, and this is going to kind of touch on, on another element that I'm going to come back to later in regards to technology, right? But if there was like a dashboard where we had access to and I could sign in and see the latest information. One of the things I was thinking of in regards to our personnel is they all receive annual performance plans, or they should be receiving annual performance plans. How well are they doing at, 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 at meeting the standards and expectations being said of them? And is there some kind of standardized elements associated with the performance plans that helps us meet the goals that we have throughout the city? So I, I'll just throw that out there because that's, that's a desire. And I'm a people person and I think it's important for us to make sure that we're, we are setting policy in a way that effectively uses our personnel. I'd also like to throw out the idea of public input. I noticed that one thing that we often do to get public input is we go to the, the Neighborhood Association Presidents. And, and unfortunately, the neighborhood, the, the N I P Presidents, they don't necessarily represent the, the feelings of all those in their community. Part of it is because people in the community don't participate in them for whatever reason, whether they don't have the time or they don't know about it, whatever the reason is. But I think to overly depend upon our neighborhood presidents as being a voice that represents all those in our community. And, and the thing that comes to mind off the top of my head are renters, right? I don't tend to see renters involved in the neighborhood associations as much as they probably could or should. And they happen to make up the majority of our population. So if we're trying to get a, a, a public input, I, I think it's really incumbent upon us to find some kind of, some other model. And I think it, it should be developed into some kind of policy. So that way it could be tweaked and worked on over time to be refined in the way that the community wants and desires it to be. And that way it's clear for all stakeholders so that we know what the process is like for, for the city to be engaged in, in public input. As far as our priorities, the next, I'm going to say three more things in regards to our, our priorities. And, and I'm wondering if it's, if it's incumbent upon us to, Nat, could you pull up those, those priorities again for this councils? I know that, I know that we have ten identified here, but I'm wondering if we either remove one or two of them or we just add to it and push some down. But I think it's important for us to appropriately reflect what we expect of, of staff and probably what they're already doing, which is COVID-19 response. And I think it's, I think it would be a failure on our part to not somehow include that in here. Because it does take up a huge amount of capacity and it is incumbent upon us as elected officials, the, the, the individuals that are representing the constituents in the city of Monterey, to make sure that there, that there's health and safety within our communities as Councilmember Smith had, had brought up, that we are maintaining that fiscal accountability element, right? But in, in, in association with COVID-19. So I just wanted, wanted to bring that up as far as an idea that maybe we want to consider as far as adding to our priorities. I, I also wanted to, to bring up Garden Road in regards to the staff plan. It doesn't specifically say anything in regards to Garden Road. And, and I guess I wouldn't say Garden Road specifically, but I would say Garden Road and projects similar to it. That, that maybe could be defined somewhere in there. Because I think that takes up a lot of staff time and I think it's important to reflect that work that's being done by staff to, to, to meet the, the councils and the community's desires. So I just kind of throw that out as, as something that we might want to potentially add in there. And then the last thing before I get to the staff, I have some comments in regards to some of the staff plan. But I, I'd like to second Alan's comments in regards to the social justice topic, right? So I'm not sure if that's something that's important for us to think about including in our priorities. Because it, the, the dynamics and the political climate has changed, not just in our community, but within the nation. And I think it would be a failure on our part to not somehow identify that as one of our priorities. Especially because again, staff is doing the work to help us get prepared to have these discussions with the community. So let me jump to the staff plan. I have a few things that I wanted to touch on. So number twenty-six is Stormwater Trash Capture Project. So, and this is just maybe for, more for awareness, generally for the public to give some background here. So when I came on as a council member, the city manager's office arranged for me to meet with all the city executives so that I could better understand what the functions and operations are within the city. And so when I met with the Public Works Director, one of the things that I learned from that experience was that the plan in regards to this topic was to put, and I could be a little bit off of how I'm going to say this, but how I understand it was that we were going to put netting over every storm drain in the city because we have to comply with state law that requires us to not allow anything more than, I'm going to throw out a number, I'm totally guessing here. I would say like four millimeters that to go into the ocean. And so our solution to that is to put netting over every storm drain. I think that that helps us comply with the state law. But I just wonder how, how, how good of an idea that is in regards to the cost that's going to be associated with it. So right, we're going to have to roll out that plan, cover every storm drain. And during, during every storm surge, we're going to have to have paid staff go out and clean the gok out from the netting in order to allow the water to go through the storm drain. So I think that's just something that I, I think it's important for us to, to think about. And I guess my question here is, what's, what is the plan? Am I, am I wrong in that? And will this be brought in front of the council for us to be able to provide some feedback or input? I, I, I guess there, I'm just mostly concerned about the cost associated with it. When I think that there's a way that we can do it, that might be able to also support one of our other huge political issues that we have, which is water, right? So if we could take that and somehow recycle it, give it to Monterey One, that might be a way of avoiding the costs associated with covering the storm drains and adding to our water supply. Number twenty-eight is the waterfront parking expansion. So kind of following up on, on Ed's comments. I guess my question there is, is it coming back in front of the council before any action is taken there? Because I, I, I'm just wondering what, what the plans are outside of just the, the basic intention of, of moving forward with that as a policy. Number thirty-seven, the city website update overhaul. I guess it's kind of almost the same question here. Is this going to be coming in front of the council at any point for our input and feedback? When we look at the priorities and, and how each of us ranked what the priorities were, I ranked technology, I believe, number three. Number two as urgent, number three as important. And I think that technology is something that's oftentimes way overlooked. And I think that technology is something that's oftentimes way overlooked and how it affects and interconnects with a lot of these other issues. And so I really appreciate the opportunity to have some discussion or input from the council regarding what that looks like moving forward. One of the big things that I try to focus on, and this kind of connects with the, the city attorney sent us that offices priorities. And one of the things that I noticed was a lot of time dedicated to the public, the Records Act request. Am I saying that correctly? Sorry, I get that confused with the federal governments. Thank you, thank you. Yes. So, so how much of that information that we're, we're having to respond to could be information that we already provide publicly via our website? So that all that staff has to do at that point is say, hey, here's a link to the site where the information is. And I'm not sure if the solution is that easy, but the point being is that we're a public agency. We should be as much as possible. I think it's incumbent upon us to make sure that we're making information and data as accessible and available to the public as possible. And so I think that there's an opportunity here as we're overhauling the city's website to really look at opportunities of where we can release more information publicly. And then this is something else that I've talked to the city manager about. But I would really love for us to roll out an app, right? And I remember from a presentation that Hans did before I was elected, something, I think the percentage was something around 34% of Monterey residents are millennials. That's a huge percentage of our population. And it's not just millennials, right? I'm just kind of highlighting that as to just to kind of the awareness. But I think there's an opportunity here for us to take leverage technology to make the services that we provide for the community more accessible and available. And so I'll give one example as far as what the benefit of the app could be. In other cities I've rolled this out, Salinas has rolled this out. But the example that I will give is, let's say you're driving to work every day and you hit the same pothole every single day. So one day you decide, okay, I'm going to get out, I'm going to open up the app, I'm going to take a picture of this pothole. It uses GPS, it sends a ticket into the city and it keeps you posted as far as what the status of that ticket is. So that way we're giving information to the public, but we're also making it easy for them to be able to submit concerns or complaints into the city. I have two more bullets here. Number 54 is Fort Ord RFP. I'm not sure if it's even necessary for us to have that on there anymore since we've already decided to nix that. So I just kind of wanted to point that out. I'm not sure if there was any other action that we needed regarding that moving forward, even though I know that myself and some of my colleagues have identified a desire or a need to kind of continuing to flesh that out as we move forward. And then my last one is. Oh, so I saw my name on the staff priorities. And I appreciate that being included on there as decisions that we've made from the council. One thing that I didn't see on there that I'm hoping that could be included is when we, in regards to property negotiations in closed session, the information that we'd make available to the public. And I actually appreciate staff because the last council meeting that we had, there was a report that went out to the public in regards to some of the closed session discussion items. But it never really came back to council as far as decision-making, as far as a policy about how we want to do that moving forward. And I'm not sure if that's something that's going to be standard as we move forward and what is appropriate for us to do that and when it's not. So I'm just hoping that that could be included and come back to us at a certain point, which is what I think the the outcome of that decision was. It was staff was going to evaluate it over the next time we did a real property negotiation and bring it back to council so that we can develop a policy on that. But I echo everything else that my colleague said. I think the staff is doing a wonderful job and I really appreciate this collaboration with the council. Thank you.
All right. I'll take a turn unless council members wanted to add anything at this point. Okay. First of all, excellent summary of priorities. To me, it's extremely important to look at some value drivers, one of which is that we we need to keep Monterey safe, scenic and solvent and our small town feeling. And I'll elaborate on that momentarily. Then secondly, it's the importance of listening to our residents before a decision is made rather than afterwards. And I think we're doing a good job with that. The city Monterey is very complex and COVID-19, I think, has pointed out how complex it is. Because you look at a city of 28,000 people, we have two orbs, the Naval Postgraduate School, Middlebury Institute, the Defense Language Institute. And many of the federal facilities do not pay property taxes, but they do have direct economic benefit to the city. And that's one of the assets that, of course, that we need to work on. And heaven forbid we get back to where we were in the 90s, 1990s where we were on the the base realignment and closure list. Hopefully that's not going to happen. So you look at a city, how many cities of 28,000 have a conference center? How many cities of our size have a sports center? Its own library, our library operates independently of the county library system. And so if you take a look at all those assets, the parking garages, we're hosting 100 to 150,000 workers and visitors a year to our small city. And throughout all those years, we've always had a balanced budget. And we have a balanced budget this year because our staffs worked really hard on fiscal accountability. So that leads me to where is the new normal going to be? And we really don't know as I'm watching today, the news that England is actually going to close its pubs. And I think that's equivalent to closing churches and other essential areas because that's just such part of their culture. Spain is re-closing. Italy is re-closing. Canada has had an upsurge in coronavirus. So we don't know what the new normal is going to be. So that's, that's why it's important that we continue to have fiscal accountability. Now, let's take a look at what the city has done there. Measure P and S was a response to the residents who said their streets were deteriorating, we want them fixed. So this gets to the priority of infrastructure. Measure S passed by 83%, which was probably a state record. Secondly, we realized that state mandates, pers, contracts, just the cost of doing business has gone up, 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 up. And in response to that, two things happened. The council put on the measure, measure G, which was a half cent sales tax that passed by 63%. And the city has promised to tighten its belt to make sure that everything we do is fiscally responsible. And the whole idea of infrastructure, we've been kicking that can down the road for a long time. But measure Y, which is the slight increase in the hotel tax, is designed to take care of our infrastructure needs in the future. So when we do get back to the new normal with measure S, citizens approve. Measure G, citizen approve. Measure Y, my hope, citizen approve. That's going to make sure that our city budget will be balanced in the long term. And all of those essential services that we provide, a sports center, a first-class recreation center, a fire department that has, leads the whole region and a hospitality industry and all of our partners and our educational community. All of us working together, we're going to keep this city solvent. So I see us taking those really hard decisions in the short term. And I look at the future and I feel very strongly that Monterey is going to continue to be a leader in, on the central coast and in the state. With that, we're going to go to closed session. I would ask if Nat, if there's anyone who has phoned in and wanted to make any comments about our closed session items?
Yeah, we can go ahead and open that up now and just give a few seconds for anyone who would like to speak only on items that are listed on the closed session agenda. We'll go ahead and take that right now. So our phone number is area code 831-582-6500. Again, 831-582-6500. And this is now the period to call in for public comment on closed session items.
Mayor, if I could follow up on one thing as we wait a few minutes for any members.
Sure, Councilmember Tyler.
Yeah, so I just kind of wanted to follow up on the first point that I was making and not to say that. Oh, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, okay. Can you hear me, Mayor?
Muted?
Nope, I'm not muted. Okay, I'm going to keep going, baby.
Sorry.
So, so, so I'm just wondering if we can bring back for discussion or if we can give staff direction in regards to the first point that I was making about some kind of calendar? So we can all kind of be connected and be on the same page as far as what things look like moving forward.
Sure, I know the city manager has done that once or twice and I'm sure he can include that in his Friday updates for us.
Yeah, we can certainly do that and follow up with the Friday updates. We, I think a number of months ago provided a little bit of a preview of what's on the docket just with the the big asterisk on there that subject to change. So we can certainly do that. And here's a list of just some of the next steps that we do plan to, to bring back to you is updated. Not a lot of major changes to the work plan, but we'll make some tweaks there based on feedback today. And then also we'd like to revisit these updated priorities in December. I think we've been hoping over the last several months to have an in-person workshop. Since we tried to aim for one every three to four months, we haven't met in eight months due to COVID. We'll have to continue to meet remotely, but it seems like this works. And this is our plan moving forward to answer your question.
Yeah, I, let me, I think it might be helpful if I clarify because maybe I, I don't think I did a good job of describing kind of where my thought was. I think it would be helpful to have a calendar that we all have access to and that we can go in and I can go to, and I'm thinking like maybe a year out, right? So we can look at a calendar and I can see next June that we're going to be discussing the budget. And I just kind of want to give that as an example. The Friday folder stuff I think is better than where we were before. But I think having a calendar to see how things are shifting and moving around in real time, I think is helpful.
Yeah, I think you're right, Tyler, because some things we know we're going to have budget reviews at certain times, we know we're going to have CDBG at certain times and review the federal mandates, et cetera. So probably many of those we can, can put a year out. Others, as you know, are hard, more hard to predict. But anything that we can have in the, as far as what's coming up in the future as routine agenda items and maybe more would be helpful. Councilmember Alan, please.
Yeah, we have, we call it the planning calendar at MPC and I won't say it's perfect, not by any means.
Sure.
But it basically lays out, kind of like what Councilman Ed was saying, there's a certain time of the year where we and the community and the staff have this conversation.
Yeah.
Then there's a time of the year, which is the early budget development phase where some of that input helps kind of drive the budget process. There are certain stages in the budget process itself. There are other things like, you know, the different kinds of reports, like the housing element or other, other kind of annual reports that we know we kind of have to do. And then there's also things like evaluations and that kind of thing. So you have it all laid out and the theory is, and I'm going to say, you know, I do think these are best practices, but I also think, you know, reality can get more complicated sometimes. But the theory is that somehow everybody knowing what's coming helps us be better prepared and not overlook things or end up kind of behind the eight ball. So I do think it's best practice and I'm sure in a way the city manager already kind of has already has a lot of this. It might just be a matter of kind of formalizing it between the rest of his management team and the council.
Yeah, that's good. I'd be interested in seeing that from MPC, Alan, if you could send it. Councilmember Dan, please.
Yeah, I'm glad you brought that up, Alan. That kind of brought back some old memories of. We also had the same type of calendar, Tyler, but we started with pulling out items that were time sensitive and deadlines. So whatever item was a deadline, we would have it on that calendar and given to the board so they know it was coming up. Thanks, Alan, for reminding me about that. Well, sort of. Well, I think you should start with deadlines and that's whatever the, the staff wants to come up with, whatever deadlines there are.
Yeah, that's good. Okay, Nat, do we have any public comment on the closed session?
Okay, and we do have some public comment. And just a reminder, these are for items that are on the closed session agenda since we've taken public comment for the workshop. So first caller is Esther Malkin.
Hi, everybody. I just wanted to say that it's really a significant contrast to what you guys conduct yourselves as a city council when you're discussing priorities or other things that compare to other regional city councils that are going through some drama. I have to say, I'm really proud of all of you guys for the way you conduct yourselves. And I was going to say that earlier, but I didn't get, I couldn't get a good signal where I am. But I just wanted to thank you all for not being an embarrassment like some other city councils that have a lot of drama going on that we don't.
Okay, thanks for that. Go on to our next public comment and this is for Zoe Carter. Hi, Zoe.
Sorry, I missed public comment earlier, so I'm just going to go ahead and give my comments now. To Tyler's point about the 10 Next app, I believe it's happening also with the county and it works really well in Salinas. I was driving down the road one day and a tree branch was down and I just recorded it and it's super easy and streamlined. And I think it's an option that we could certainly look at for our city to just make things easier on everybody and it just goes to the right departments. And it's something that could be added in, it's something that's user-friendly for all of our residents and would totally bring us up into the next century. I will also say that as this election has been going on, I really appreciate that our city is completely transparent with all of our reporting and our election records. It's really difficult in other cities to find that and I appreciate that our city stays on top of that. So thank you all.
Thank you. All right, we have no other public comment.
Okay, then we are going to adjourn to closed session. Let's, everybody come back together at 5:45, please. And we will be using a different Google Meet app as well. So thank you for the outstanding staff work and council input. We are a great team. I appreciate you all. See you in about 10 minutes. We are a great team. I appreciate you all. See you in about ten minutes.